I want to welcome everybody to this regular scheduled board meeting for January the ninth, two thousand and eighteen, here at the South Walton NX. If you will, rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our pastor today is Mike Thornton from the Seagrove Baptist Church. Mike?
Thank you for the opportunity. Let us pray. Father, what a great day you've given us, Lord, and may we honor you with everything that we have, from our minds to our hearts to our souls, Lord. I pray that you would just be with the meeting today, be with the commissioners, Lord. I pray that you would give them wisdom as in the scriptures it says to ask, and you shall receive, Lord. And I pray that you would just give them the strength, Father, to lead well. And Father, I pray that throughout the meeting that you would just bring up peace. And Father, just allow your presence to be felt, Lord. And may we all conduct ourselves in a way that's just honoring to you first and foremost, and then just honors this county, Lord. I pray that you would be with each leader that's involved here today, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray that allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, there's some guests in the audience I'd like to introduce today. This is Gail Smith, our school board member. She's over there on the right-hand side, my right-hand side. Wanda Smith, I think most of you, if you've been around here long, know who Wanda is. Wanda has, we pulled her out of retirement due to the resignation of our finance director. She's going to sit in as the interim until we can fill that position. She's well-versed in how this thing, thank you, Wanda. Mr. Russell Hughes, good to see you here, sir. We would like to introduce, if most of you may be aware of, that our county attorney, Sidney Noes, recently had a child, born January the second, weighed nine pounds, one ounce, little baby girl, and she's doing well, mama's doing well, and we hope everything continues to go well for them. Ms. Rhonda Skipper, our tax collector, Rhonda, do you have a comment you want to make? Come forward, please.
I know tonight that in the agenda, first, Rhonda Skipper, tax collector, and Happy New Year to everyone, but in the agenda, you're going to approve, I believe, for the contract to go forward with the South Walton renovations and hopefully for a footprint in Freeport. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, we are very, very thankful. We're very appreciative, we're very excited, and I want to thank Stan, Mr. Jones, and this board for making this come to pass, because we've been working on this initiative through Mr. Casella, Mr. Bell, and now working with Mr. Jones, so thank y'all very much. The other thing I wanted to let you know was that during the month of November and December, our tax collector's office collected one hundred forty-four million dollars in revenues that was distributed to the state agency, our local taxing authorities, and to our school district, and that is a record in the history of our county, so I'm pleased for that. The other thing I wanted to let you know that on the twenty-third, for the public hearing regarding the capital project that we're going to be doing, I'm required by law to have so many hours of continuing ed as some of you are, but because I deal with public funds, it is mandatory that I attend that class, so I will not be at the public meeting. But Ms. Patty Kirkland, who is here in the audience, and Brian McBroom, who is our manager of South Walton, will be here to answer any questions that you might have or any comments. So thank you again for that. The other thing I wanted to let you know, that I do have a one-page graph that I wanted to just give for your review, and we can address this more in the public hearing where we have more time and respect for your agenda tonight, but it goes from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-three, it's just projections of the numbers of people that we will be, have served, are serving, and will be serving. So we're excited, as you can imagine, and so there's the graph. The other thing is I want to ask you to think about what the sheriff said several meetings back, when he said to put together a committees, a committee of a facilities need assessment. I would like to encourage us to really do that, so that in the future, when we have situations that come up, we have changes of the guard, people in critical positions, then we will have a plan, a place that we can look at and say, oh, that's where they were going with that. The other thing I would like for you to consider is when the constitutional officers and other county offices returned unused fees, maybe use a portion of that, put it, I don't know if you can do a trust, because I certainly don't know all the laws that you have to adhere to, but even a small portion of that in a fund that could be strictly used for improvements to our buildings to keep them up, and that way we always have a little bit of reserve that can be used if we needed a roof, if we needed a door, whatever. But just moving forward, I would like for you to just to consider that. And the last thing I want to ask for your support of is House Bill one forty-five and Senate Bill three twenty-two is a bill that would redirect some of the monies that go for driver's license. When we do retesting, some of those retesting, we get nothing, and it's a man, it's some, sometimes it's ten dollars, sometimes it's twenty dollars that goes to the state, and that needs to stay in our coffers. So if you could support that bill, as a board, I'm asking you to support the tax collectors, contact our delegates in Tallahassee, ask them to please support House Bill one forty-five and Senate Bill three twenty-two. We almost got it passed last year, and in the eleventh hour, the department threw a bunch of stuff in there and they just said, forget it. So encourage your association to support that bill. I would ask the public to please contact the legislature, ask them to support this bill, because it's going to give us more money. It's not a fee increase, I want to stress that again, this is not a fee increase, it's money that we collect, the state puts in a trust fund, and it's for equipment and for their use, for whatever they want to use it with, but we certainly can use that money more than they can. Do you have any questions for me tonight?
I just have a comment. I want to thank you for your efficient government, because with us working together, we can keep the mileage low. So I just want to thank you personally, because I do know this money comes back, and it doesn't come back just by chance, it comes back by good management, so thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper.
Thank y'all.
All right. Call the meeting to order. If you have any electronic devices, phones, whatever, please silence them at this time. Thank you. All right, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, under consideration for deletions and additions, we have one deletion we would request, and that is under Commissioner Anderson, the thirty-eight traffic city update options. We're asking to delete that from today's agenda, and that's the only change we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to approve with deletion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. At this time, open the floor to public comments. This is the time, if you have a particular comment that you want to make, please identify which agenda item it is, it must be an agenda item, so if you have that, the floor is open now for public comments concerning the agenda items. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time? Keep it in mind, as we go through the agenda, the agenda, that we always ask for public comment individually of each one of them, so it's up to you if you want to do it now in case you have to leave early or something. Is there any? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, may we kindly remove number ten.
Small county road assistance, the scrap?
Correct, the scrap grant regarding, for County Highway zero-six-zero-five.
Okay.
I've recused myself due to, what's the correct words, public, personal interest or gain?
Because you live on it?
Because I live on the road.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with item number ten being pulled for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, we need to go ahead and discuss item number ten for the remaining board. So what's the board's wishes there?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. We have one abstain, so the motion carries. All right, next thing up is the approval of the consent agenda. What's the board's wish?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
You got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have, the next item up is Waste Management EAL. Go ahead and make the formal announcement. I will abstain from the vote due to a conflict of interest, and I have filed the necessary paperwork with the clerk. So that's up, entertain a motion to approve or disapprove Waste Management EAL.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the public?
Jinkies.
Ms. Bowman.
Why does it always say, approve expenditure, expenditure approval list excluding the waste management expenditures?
Because we do it separately, because I have a conflict of interest, so we separate it out.
Okay, what's your conflict of interest?
My son-in-law works for Waste Management.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Four-oh. Okay, I think, Mr. Jones, you're in the will.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you're going to make some awards for exemplary service regarding those that participated in the Hurricane Irma event.
Okay. All right, I'm going to, Jeff Goldberg, our EM director, if he'll come up and meet me up front here, and he will announce what's going on here, and we'll make the presentations.
Jeff Goldberg, EM director, G O L D E, G O L D E R G for the record. These are exemplary service awards that we're presenting to a number of organizations for going above and beyond the call of duty to ensure Walton County residents and visitors remain safe during Hurricane Irma in September twenty-seventeen. One of the things that I do want to let folks know is, this does not mean that nobody else did their jobs. Everybody was fantastic. Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue, County Administration, the Health Department, all the organizations that were involved in the hurricane response did a phenomenal job. These organizations that we're giving the exemplary service award to basically went above and beyond. There were a lot of things that they did that were not in the plans, that were not traditionally in their job descriptions, and some of them were not even involved, had never been involved in disaster response in the past. And everybody rallied and came through and really did a phenomenal job. So the first one is the Walton County School District. They provide a lot of sheltering for us, but one of the things that they did that was not involved in the, in the plans was pet-friendly sheltering, they provided logistics support, movement of equipment, setup and breakdown, and a lot of other things, and Superintendent Hughes?
The next is the Matrix Community Outreach Center. One of the issues that we ran into, and a lot of counties run into during disasters, is volunteers, volunteers for sheltering. We had a major shortfall on shelter volunteer, citizen information center, mask care feeding, and the Matrix and Candy Nowling really stepped up and mobilized that whole piece. She got volunteers for the shelter, she got volunteers for our citizen information lines. She had people and organizations bringing food to the shelters and the shelter workers and evacuees, so she did a phenomenal job. She can't be here today, but Brandon Elkins, the community outreach coordinator, is. One of the organizations that Candy helped mobilize for this was Southwide Baptist Church. One of the issues that we ran into is we had received a mission from State Emergency Management to open up a host shelter in order to handle evacuees coming from the peninsula. All sixty-seven counties within the state was impacted by this storm by one way or another, either directly or providing support. So we received a mission request to do a host shelter, we reached out to Candy to see if she knew anybody, she got ahold of Southwide, and we've had a relationship with Southwide Baptist for a while, and they provided a shelter, they provided shelter staffing, they helped provide some meals. So Pastor Jeremy Lewis was phenomenal on that. Unfortunately, Destiny Worship Center in Freeport couldn't have a representative here, but they also helped a lot with staffing, feeding, emotional and spiritual support of the evacuees, but they couldn't make it to get their, their award, as well as the city of Dufuniac Springs. They provided the host shelter post-storm, they provided staffing, they provided equipment, again, things that are not necessarily in the plan, that they came in on the weekends, and they handled a lot of this. So unfortunately, we didn't have representation from either of those two organizations, but we'll get their plaques to them.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Jeff, before you leave, there's two people, including, well, three people, including yourself, who you've left out, your staff, and I'm out there most of the time, it's, I've had a little training, so I go out and volunteer to clean.
We would have gone hungry, among other things, out there without you, and I-
But your staff is phenomenal.
They are.
And we need to give them a big hand as well.
Well, you know, you get up here and you have everything rehearsed in your head, and then you just forget it.
We thank you too, Ms. Sarah.
Again, thank you to everybody that assists this county and our emergency management personnel when we have these type of disasters, like Ms. Sarah. I spent many an hour in that bunker out there during Hurricane evacs and what have you, and it's always nice, and it makes it hectic, but we get things accomplished for the good of the people. So thanks again to everybody that participates and helps us. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item for your consideration is a request from the Children's Volunteer Health Net Network, represented by Kelly Thompson and Mike Gabigan. The request is to approve for them to close both lanes of County Highway thirty-eight from Mystic Cobalt to Wilderness Way on May twelve, two thousand and eighteen, from seven AM to nine AM for the second annual Smile Mile and Five K. This has been reviewed by the appropriate authorities and approved by the South Walton Fire District, Walton County Sheriff's Office, Walton County Public Works. We recommend your approval contingent upon them meeting all the terms and conditions set forth by those agencies.
Okay.
I do have one question, you know, a question.
Is, there you are, okay. Come forward, and so, Madam Commander, can I ask you a question? Go ahead and-
The last time, if you remember, we blocked off a road, we got a lot of feedback from closing off a road and people not knowing about it, not being able to get to church and all that sort of thing. I realize this, I believe, is on a Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
But how many neighborhoods are you going to impact, and how are y'all handling that? That would be my question.
Yes, thank you. My name's Mike Gabigan, I'm the chair of the Board Directors for CDHN. This is Kelly Thompson, she's our development director, and we have Curtis Wolf over here, our interim CEO. Last year, we, we worked with the Sheriff's Office to close thirty-eight from the east side of Watercolor to Wilderness Way. We received no negative feedback from any homeowners. The most dense part that have homeowners is actually in Watercolor, and Watercolor Security and the HOA helps us with that security, and then the Sheriff's Office with thirty-eight, and the one street or the two streets are Wilderness Way and then Old Miller Place, and we just, we have not received any complaints or any negative feedback.
That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a comment concerning notification. I understand from reading here, you have signage out, you're going to advertise this. I'm going to ask Mr. Jones to utilize the, I made a note of it here, let me find it real quick, alert Walton status, our system there for notifications, and if we make sure, I don't know if Jeff handles that, or do you handle that? You take care of it?
Okay.
All right, well, we want to put that in there, and we normally can broadcast it up in a certain circumference to put a little more notice out there, if you will, but please do as much noticing that you can, because like I said, we got blistered the last time we held something down there and shut the road down. So let's make sure we give as much full warning, okay? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. The next three items are somewhat related, in that they're all dealing with positions to fill vacancies on the Coastal Boone Lake Advisory Board. The first item is for to fill a on-lake position. In your booklet, board book, you have those that have made application to fill that position. I believe that's on Melinda Gates here, she will have a recommendation, if you would like to hear that.
Yes, Ms. Gates, let's see, Melinda, I think we, in our previous discussions of the four there, I asked you to come forward with a recommendation to the board to fill that position. You have that recommendation?
Yes, sir. Actually, after further consideration of those particular applicants, all of them are great applicants, but I think we'd like to go with Laura Talbert on it.
Laura Talbert?
Yes.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Ready to be taken away at the time?
Yeah, we'll get one at a time, this one here.
I will make a motion.
To accept her recommendation?
To accept her recommendation. Second.
Motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Next item again is regarding the Coastal Boone Lake Advisory Board, and this is a position for the north of the bay resident. You had two individuals submit their names for your consideration, and again, I believe Melinda will have a recommendation, if you so desire.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it like we did the last time.
Certainly. And again, both of those candidates are very well-qualified candidates, but it would be recommended that Richard Murmer is selected for that particular position.
Okay.
Motion to accept that nomination. Second.
Third.
I have a motion and a second to accept Richard Murmer. Is any public comment?
Doesn't he have some history, and isn't he the one that has some history in lakes and that sort of thing? Yeah, he has, he's working.
All right. Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And the final one, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
The final one is an on-lake position that is currently held by Debbie Hurd, whose term would expire January thirty-one of this year. She does desire to continue serving on that board, and it would be our recommendation that she be allowed to do so.
The board's wishes?
Approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Debbie Hurd. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to award, approve, and authorize the chair to sign contract number zero-one-seven-dash-zero-two-nine for the resurfacing of County Road thirty-eight. This is phase three of this project from County Road eighty-three to County Road three-ninety-five. That's a contract with Mid-South paving LLC in the amount of eight-hundred-thirty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ten dollars. We would recommend your approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any public comment concerning this topic? Ms. Bowman?
Okay, so the bridge has been blocked between Grayton and Blue Mountain for several months now, so how, how much of an inconvenience is this going to be? Like, how long of a project, and do you-
Chance, or somebody from Public Works here?
We'll get some of them in here that can give us a little more detail.
Will this come up again? No.
Charlie referenced this resurfacing project, she was asking how long it will take him, how much more inconvenience, or is this, basically, is that bridge going to be opened prior to we starting this project here?
The bridge?
Yeah.
We'll be resurfacing for approximately two weeks, and the road won't be closed, it'll just be lane restrictions as we resurface. It'll take approximately two weeks, and it's going to happen towards the tail end of the bridge construction.
Okay.
About when, what time of year?
It'll be late this month, early February.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to know how long it was going to take, because, you know, the road's been blocked for so long, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number thirty.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request to reject all bids associated with invitation to bid zero-one-eight-dash-zero-zero-two. This is the Lafayette Creek Boardwalk Phase Two project, due to, we're asking you to reject those due to budget constraints, and prior to re-advertising, we'd probably like to do some work. This is a NERDA project, which was approved to be funded. We, we'd probably want to take a look at the scope of the project, the funds that are available, and determine if there may be a better use of those funds at that location. This project would extend the boardwalk that's along the shore of the creek, which is very nice, very beautiful, but probably what is there is underutilized, and we may be, be better served by using these funds in some other areas within the park. So what we'd like for your action to be is to allow us to reject those bids and have some conversation with the Florida Fish and Wildlife as to whether we can make some amendments to our requests that would better serve us in that area, and then come back with another request for an invitation to be at a later date.
Motion to approve.
Second. We want to make this all one motion, counsel, as far as rejection of the bid- We want to make this all one motion, Council, as far as rejection of the bid plus giving staff direction to look at modification of this project?
You looking at rebidding it?
No, not at this point. Right, so really, really all we want to do now is reject these bids and allow staff to determine if there's some other methods or improvements that can be made at the park that would be better served the public.
Yeah, that's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah, and that's fine, as long as it's clear to the clerk what the motion was.
Okay.
Okay.
And we made the second.
I did, and that's my second.
Okay. All right, is any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request for your approval to advertise and hold a public hearing on January 23, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. or soon thereafter at the Walton County Courthouse in Defuniak Springs to bring forward $1,068,656 for capital improvements at the South Walton Courthouse Annex and the Freeport Business Park. These are the funds that will be remitted by, or have been remitted by the constitutional officers from the previous year budget. We'd like to earmark them for the renovation of this facility and the Freeport Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And again, all you're doing today is sitting a public hearing for the next meeting.
We're sitting a public hearing, yes, on the 23rd.
All right, a motion and a second, is any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Hey, Mr. Tussie, you're up, or Brian, whoever's gonna handle it today?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioner, Brian Keller, Director of Beach Operations. Mr. Tussie's out this afternoon. So, myself and Jason Cottrell will be handling these items. Number 32, request approval to advertise invitation to bid for renovations to four existing beach access locations that were included in the FY16 budget. Remembering FY16 and FY17, we started a design and permitting process for all of our beach access boardwalks. We're getting those permits coming in now and so we'd like to bid these out as the permits become available. So, this is Fort Panic, regional beach access, the boardwalk portion of that, Inlet Beach, regional beach access, it has three boardwalks, and then 395 and Hickory Street, which are neighborhood beach accesses in the Seagrave area. So, they're items that were budgeted under annual budget and we now would like to put out the ITB for construction.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion among the board? Seeing none, is any public comment? Mr. Brook?
Bob Brook, just one quick question, please. What is the budgeted amount for these four renovations or improvements?
$400,000.
$400,000.
Thank you.
Any other comment, public comment? Seeing none, have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Next item, number 33, is a request direction on an available parcel of land in the Miramar Beach area. This is at 76 Driftwood Road. This is due north of our Miramar Beach, regional beach access, and the intended purpose would be for additional parking for that regional beach access. So, we're asking direction on how the Commission would like for us to proceed and that next process would be to get appraisals titled and stuff like that and then come back to the Commission with how they would like for us to proceed after that.
All right, so you're asking to be allowed to go ahead and get appraisals on the property?
Yes, sir. Do our due diligence.
You're right.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Also, just for our discussion, this is not only, in my opinion, a very important piece of property for, for parking. I'd like Chance or Charlie to come up and explain, that's a really bad drainage area. The people on Driftwood and Ellis have had problems for years and my fear is that if we don't buy this property, that eventually somebody's going to do something with it that will cause more problems for those drainage and, you know, after talking with Charlie and Chance, they, they were the ones that brought that to my attention. I'd like Charlie to explain a little bit about that.
Public Works is currently in the process of completing a preliminary engineering evaluation to do drainage improvements on Driftwood and Ellis, and there's several sub-basins within Driftwood and Ellis. It goes from Scenic 98 to Highway 98. This particular base, or this particular piece of property is located in a basin that we consider to be critically flooded, meaning after the April 30 storm, 2014, that there was residential structure flooding. So, we feel like, and in fact, that the residential structures that were flooded were directly across from this piece of property. We feel like this is a great opportunity for not only beach parking, but to implement some storm drainage as part of our future project to prevent that in future.
Charlie, how would you combine the two, a parking plus drainage?
We, we have really good sandy soils there and good depths of groundwater, so what we do is an oversized exfiltration type system with maybe some pervious asphalt for, for the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow staff to move forward with getting appraisals on this piece of property and bring it back to the board. Is there any public comment? Mr. Brook?
Bob Brook, just one question. A 130 space estimate, is that based on single level parking?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Number 34.
Chairman, I'd like to skip number 34. Jason's gonna handle that and the updates. I'd like to skip number 35 and then Jason can get up and handle number 34 if that'll be okay with you.
You got any more you're gonna handle?
Yes, sir, I have number 35.
All right, go ahead, it's pretty simple.
This is a request for approval for the TDC to schedule a public workshop to take public input on the design for the Amalfi Coast Regional Beach Access. That's our new piece of property we purchased. We've had a meeting with the Amalfi Coast owners as requested by the BCC and now we'd like to have a public workshop for all citizens of Walton County that want to provide input. It'd be a TDC workshop and typically, you know, they're an hour and a half, two hours long, open format meeting.
All right, what's the board's wishes?
So, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
Thank you, sir. We'll schedule that meeting for sometime mid-February.
All right, thank you. Number, Jason, you got 34, I believe?
Yes, sir. Excuse me before you start, Jason. Brian, could you meet with me a few minutes during the break?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Cottrell, Director of Administration for the TDC, and I thank you for your time. The next agenda item for your consideration is number 34, the appointment of new representatives to the TDC North Walton Events Committee. The little history, this committee meets to review all the events and scores them on the merit of their applications for marketing, for potential marketing support. The current members are District One, Bill Fletcher; District Two, Robert Nelson; District Three, Evelyn Smith; District Four, Butch Lawrence; District Five, Diane Merkel; and Defuniak Springs Mayor, Bob Campbell; Freeport Mayor, Russ Barley; Paxton Mayor, Howard Thomas; and Walton Area Chamber Representative, Megan Harrison. We're just giving you the opportunity to review this and if you would like to appoint any current members, you can do so now, it's a two-year term, or you can wait until the next meeting where we'll come back again with the list to confirm before the next committee meeting in March.
I would prefer we wait till the next meeting.
Sure would, I.
I've already, I'll wait till the next meeting. I need to speak with Ms. Smith, but I would like to appoint someone new.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so I think the direction from the board is that we'll address it at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And real quick, I want to do a TDT update on bed tax collection for November 2017. Our collections were 824,482 and that is 26.1% higher than November 2016, so definitely showed an increase in our fall visitation. And FY18 year-to-date total was 2,175,303 and that's 6.72 higher than FY17 year-to-date. So, that's good news.
Yeah, it is.
Barring any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Jason?
So, I can just appoint someone now, is that what you said?
You can, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Reynolds Henderson for District Three, please.
District Three, Reynolds Henderson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see where we're at. We got a public hearing. Yes, we need to have a motion to open it up, the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor just say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Ms. Heather.
Chairman, request number 37, request number 37 is a request to approval from the Board to advertise and hold a public hearing on the two-year TDC plan update for January 23, 2018.
Okay, it's a public hearing, is there any public comments concerning this request? Ms. Bowman?
What's the intention of this increase?
I don't believe it's an increase. I believe it's just re-establishing what we've already been doing for decades.
Okay.
So, we have to do these things every few years to just reaffirm what we've been doing.
Okay, all right, and it's 3%? I thought the tourist tax was 1%. Am I reading this wrong? I don't have glasses.
It's actually 4%. This is...
This is what they do with the third cent?
Third cent.
Oh, this is what you do with the third cent?
Yes, four cents, not 4%, four cents.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I guess we need to close it or vote on it now and close it, how you want to do it?
You want some money? No, doesn't involve money.
You can close a public hearing and then vote on it. And again, this is just a vote to advertise for the hearing, January 23.
I would take a motion to...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we'll take a vote on the request.
Motion to approve, motion to approve the ordinance.
Oh, excuse me, this is just, motion to advertise...
A motion to advertise.
Public hearing, January 23.
All right, got a motion, got a second. Ms. Sarah, did you second that?
I second, yes, sir.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Number 38, is that also a, that's under the public hearing, so we...
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, okay, we're in now a public hearing concerning the request.
Chairman, this is an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners, Walton County, establishing hours and days of operation for airboats in Walton County, provided for purpose, legislative findings, authority, severability, inclusion in the code, and an effective date. That's it, Chairman.
Okay. Hang on a minute. So, we're gonna have a public hearing on that. Is that now today or are we gonna...
Yes, sir.
Set it for a future date? Today? This is, okay. All right, I think what we got here is that we've had a couple of discussions in the public concerning airboat operations, primarily on the bayside, and we was hoping we could get this worked out between the community and the airboat operator, but that ain't exactly working like it should. So, the counties have been preempted from the state to really do a lot of regulation concerning the use of the waterways in this state. We can't set wake zones, we can't set speeds, we can't do much of anything concerning the use of the water. However, some counties have come up with a, an approach that apparently has been upheld by the courts and that is dealing with hours of operation or noise. Now, today, we're talking about initially establishing the hours of operation, which I think it helped, instead of daylight blasting through the area down there, it'll be a little bit later in the morning. There's still a lot in talking with legal and the Sheriff's Office concerning the noise level is gonna be a little bit more difficult because of some parameters we gotta meet within the statute. So, I'm not wanting to go there today on the, the noise part until we, for legal and the Sheriff's Office to do some additional research to see if we can incorporate it. What I think we need to try and do is go ahead and establish the hours of operation now, get that in effect, and allow legal to do its research and come back to us. So, any other questions or comments?
May I ask legal to look into an idle speed, establishing an idle speed? I know the, the airboat doesn't create a wake, so there, you wouldn't have a wake zone, but at least an idle speed past the homes?
That's what I was hoping to try and get accomplished too, but apparently FWC, as I understand it, regulates wake zones and speed limits and all this other stuff, so...
I understand, and it may not be appropriate, I'm certainly not an attorney, but I pulled up the Pam Bondi's Attorney General information regarding airboats, so I, just something I looked at. We'll see what happens, but...
I will certainly incorporate that into our research.
Thank you, if we can look into it, thanks.
All right, any other comments from the board? Any public comments? Ms. Bowman?
Yeah, I had a question. Does the Walton County currently own any airboats of its own?
No.
Because when I read the long version of this, it says you were talking about establishing hours of use because of the noise ordinance, but that, that shall not preclude the county from using airboats any time of day that it wants, of course, with some legitimate reason like an emergency or, oh, I don't know, whatever you could make up to drive around in the middle of the night. But I did some other research and as it turns out, I found out that the Choctawatchee Bay is actually federal property, the bay itself, which is why you all don't have any power to make any rules in it. And, yeah, you can restrict which boat launches people use because, you know, that's, that's, you know, on the land part, but that's why you're having so much difficulty making a rule about this because the Choctawatchee Bay is actually not your jurisdiction. So, I don't know what's gonna happen with this except that I don't think there's gonna be any airboats at all ever in the Choctawatchee Bay. They're detrimental to the wildlife, they do extreme damage to the grasses, the fish, the birds, and all of the bay dolphins. So, anyways, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brook?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, does the Sheriff's Office have any?
No.
Okay. I'm not sure we can even determine which boat launches they can use from the research I've done, of course, as I mean attorney, Google.
Let's let them, legal research all of your concerns about that too. Ms. Brook?
Bob Brook, just a question. Doesn't the beach activities ordinance have a watercraft usage segment to it and would this properly go, rather than a separate segment, be incorporated in that?
I can't speak to that, not sure.
I don't think the beach activities ordinance would deal with the bay and I'm gonna defer to Mr. Cullenberger, he probably shed some light on that.
This is purely, purely for the bay usage?
Yes, that's where we're hearing the complaints.
Thank you.
Chapter 22 does address activities on waterways, it's called the Chapter 22 Waterways and Beaches Activities Code. However, as we've previously discovered, the FWC has jurisdiction over all the waterways in Walton County.
Thank you. All right. So, what's, any other public comment? Ms. Smith? I do believe you live down there, do you?
I do.
I hope so.
Gail Smith, resident in the Bay Area. I would ask first that there is concern regarding the noise level and I recognize that and I hear that, I hear it regularly, but at our last meeting where we discussed this, there was tremendous amount of conversation regarding the ecological impact and that is, that truly is a concern and I wondered whether or not we've, we've discussed with Northwest Florida Water Management Entity how all of the waterboat traffic or the airboat traffic, well, now it's one boat, but from what I'm reading, it could be many, the impact that that will have on our, our water management and property there is owned, am I correct, Mr. Cullenberger?
Yes, ma'am. It's my understanding that a lot of that delta area is owned by the Northwest Florida Water Management Association, some of it's owned by the Nature Conservancy, and I believe another entity may own some of that, a conservational type group.
Brian, are you aware of anybody, anyone, entity that may oversee this whole thing or take action or is that a, get half of those state federal agencies involved?[1775.33]
Well, I would check with the Water Management Association. They recently were able to achieve the blue water status, I believe it was, for the Choctawatchee River in that area. Since they are the predominant landowner of most of that area, I would check with them to see if they have any attitude or issue or authority over what is on in there.
Okay. Gail, before you say something, is Melinda or Scott Keraway out there in the hall?
They're using up my time.
Huh?
To talk.
I'll give you some extra time.
We'll restart it.
We'll restart it, have to. Well, while they're coming, go ahead. I'll ask my question to them.
I think that when we think about the water filtering system, that that impacts not only the ecological environment, it's going to impact the citizens of Walton County and the drinking water and everything. Clearly, I would hope that as a commission that you all would look carefully at the impact this could have. We're opening the gates to this type of activity that runs deep into the heartland of our bay. And we can't undo what will be done. I think that we need to consider that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Melinda?
Yes, sir.
I think this whole situation, when we start talking about airboats, it's now gone into the ecological part of it. Mr. Jones, maybe we can get staff to work and reach out to FWC, EPA, DEP, whomever...
Yes, sir.
And create a conversation with them and see if there's anything within their wheelhouse that they have some control over or can mandate the use of certain activities within those sawgrasses or all that. If you read what I've been provided from some people, I mean, they say there's no eagles, there's no egrets, or whatever else they call them, them type of animals. I can talk to you about another kind of bird up in the north end, but down here, they...
Osprey.
Not too familiar with them.
Osprey.
But anyway, let's see what we can do there. And as legal is starting to look a little bit further on what we possibly can or can't do using the AG or anybody else, let's see if you can reach out, Ms. Jones, whomever, him, her, Scott, and see if there's a federal or state agency that's got more of a hook in this, because everybody knows that we get preempted all the time from the state. They don't want us engaging in these things. They want to carry the ball. So, let's see if we can bring it all under one envelope.
Yes, sir.
And try to get it...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Yes, sir. And I failed to mention, as you come up, identify yourself to the clerk so we'll have a clean record.
My name is Darrell Smith. I live on the bay. And the biggest concern I have is we haven't heard the airboat in a while, and I assume that's because it's not their season. So, I'm thinking that probably a lot of people have considered that this thing is over with. And I'm asking the board, and it sounds like you're delaying to some degree, I'm asking that you wait until the airboat starts back up again, which it will, I'm sure, and then come out and listen, so that you, too, can hear.
Okay. Well, I don't want you to think that we're trying to delay. We're only delaying one segment, and that has to deal with the noise component of it. We're gonna try and regulate, hopefully today, regulate the hours of use, which hopefully will cut out on the early morning and the late night stuff as the season progresses. But the same can get convoluted real quick, and we guess we need to make sure we're on good legal ground.
My other point has to do with the actual use, or the actual running of the airboat. It's one thing to get in an airboat and go from point A to point B. It's quite another thing to go out and hotdog. And that's what I feel is being done. The sound that you hear from a jet ski when it's going around in circles is the same sound that we're hearing from the airboat. And I'm thinking that instead of an ecological tour, that we're actually running an amusement tour. And I would hope that there is some avenue that we can use to specify the type of travel that the airboat can make and not an amusement-type travel.
Mr. Smith, it's not that we don't want to do that, but we're limited by what the state will allow us to do. Anything in the waterways, I mean, we can't even set wake zones where boats are being launched. I don't like it either, but we are limited, and that's what we're trying to figure out, how do we get with the state to govern this? And right now, it's like the dog chasing his tail. But it's not that we're trying to prolong anything. We're just having to deal with state agencies that are telling us, hey, we handle this, you don't.
Don't read me wrong, I understand that you're working for us. I'm just hoping that maybe you could add that to the list of possibilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would be happy to come out if you could call my office and let me know.
I will.
And I met with a gentleman to let him know, you know, these are the concerns of these citizens, and you need to be a good, you know, good steward of your business if you indeed want to keep doing this. I mean, my choice would be he didn't, but, anyway, thank you.
And don't forget, there'll be more.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Chick Hiddle. I'm president of the Coastal Heritage Society here. And I think it was about maybe long before Yalva came on the board, about twelve years ago, maybe even fifteen, they had an airboat at Alltown Bay. That board stopped them because they were commercially picking it up off the Walton County Park. It's a public park, not used for profit or enterprise. That's all I say. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess also for legal to keep in mind, too, researching, my question's always been, are they using these ramps as commercial operations? Now, gotta find out what the definition of that is. And commissioners, what I'm talking about, if they pay online from taking that boat ride and they meet at one of the ramps and get on the boat and do their thing, is that a commercial operation, even though they don't exchange funds or pay for the trip at that point in time, at the county-owned property? I don't know. So, I'd ask y'all maybe research that, too, to see if that's a mechanism also.
Is your answer on the list?
You put it on the list, okay.
Make motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. I think next thing that we need to address on this is this ordinance dealing with the airboat days and hours of operation. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve this while we do further research, to see if we can strengthen it any.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And a motion is second. Is that satisfactory to legal on that motion?
Yes, it is.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank y'all very much. Let's see... Ms. Heather, I think you're up.
Yes, Chairman. The next item is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the retainer agreement with Thariac in Spain to represent the county in the Alford appeal. And this is just an update. We had... The county had a contract with Mr. Thariac's office for the Alford case. Now it's on appeal, so he's up, asked to update the legal services contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Oh, he's leaving. I thought he was coming up to talk. All right, I see no public comment. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right, Commissioner Commander?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items. Number one is that Frank Anderson is the representative from District Four on the Planning Commission. And Frank has expressed to me that it's getting more and more difficult for him to serve. He actually sent me a letter today. I don't have it printed out, but it's an email form. Excuse me. He says, "I would like this opportunity to inform you that I can no longer participate as a Walton County Planning Board member because of the demands of operating AAA trusts on a daily basis. I would like to thank you, the Planning Department staff, and board members for the experience. Please accept this letter as my resignation. James F. Anderson." So, I don't know exactly what the procedure is. Do we... I have someone that is willing to take his place. Do we do it two separate motions, or do I make a motion to accept his resignation?
Two motions would probably be the cleanest way.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. I'll take it. Is any public comment? Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
All right, and my next motion would be, I have spoken to Mike Barker. Most of you know Mike, and he and his wife, and he is absolutely excited about serving on the Planning Commission. And I would, and is my motion, put his name for District Four.
Second, uh...
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
I want to take this opportunity to thank Louis. He did an outstanding job in the newsletter, talking about the restore and how we're moving forward. I want to thank he and Melinda Gates and Bill Williams. They're working diligently to, for us to try. It is my desire. I go to Washington at the end of this month. I want to meet with Treasury and say, everything is in place, we're ready to go. That is my goal. I will be coming back to you at the next meeting. May need a motion on two or three things we need to clear up, because there, again, like Treasury has always done, they give you a list of rules, and then they think, they wait a while, think, well, if they add this to it, you know? So, they have done this. There's something about a green book that we didn't know until very recently that we've got to look at. But I want to thank you, and staff are letting them work, so that when, hopefully, we go to Washington at the end of the month, we can hit Treasury with our projects and start rolling.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Nipper?
Nothing, sir.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
I'm going to Washington at the end of the month, and I hope to lobby for a Veterans Hospital. Right now, the hospital is planned to go at Holt, but if we get this new project called Veterans Landing that possibly could come in, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get it. So, we're gonna try to see if there's any traction in that. Tomorrow, we're going to Tallahassee to sit in on a hearing about the customary use legislation that they're trying to do in Tallahassee that would negate any action we could take on the customary use lawsuit. So, we want to go over and see what's going on there. We, you know, I personally like a lot of local controls, so that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I'd like for our traffic engineer, Chance Powell, to come in and give us an update on the turn lane at three ninety-five and thirty-eight.
Good evening, commissioners. Chance Powell, Walton County Public Works. I know you guys know from an email that I sent you earlier, but I know the public needs to be informed. It was our goal to have a traffic signal up at the three ninety-five, thirty-eight intersection by spring break, and everything was on path, and we were gonna hit that mark until the manufacturer for the mast arm in Canton, Ohio, decided two or three days before Christmas to lay off three hundred and thirty employees and shut their operation down. There's about five companies in the U.S. that build these mast arm structures, so we haven't been kicked all the way back to the back of the list. Again, apparently, they have enough material on site there and the limited amount of crew they're gonna keep on for the next few months. They're gonna go ahead and build that structure, but they pushed the delivery date back from last week to March. So, we're gonna go ahead and get the drill shaft and foundation in and expect delivery in March, but we'll most likely install it between spring break and Memorial Day weekend. So, just wanted to give you guys that update. Everything else is on track as good as we can with the underground utilities that we're dealing with. There's a lot of conflicts out there that we're dealing with, but I know there's some impacts, delays, and inconveniences, but it is all work that has to be done. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay.
We got a company who already know that's been in operation since nineteen oh nine and has decided to shut the doors and go away.
That's right.
And they're gonna, as of right now, gonna build our mast for that intersection.
Yes, sir.
Now, as soon as they finish it, we get it, they go away, and the thing falls over the next day. We got no recourse. We can't go back to them, can we, legal? I mean, unless you got their insurance or bond or something to hold it in place.
It makes it difficult.
Basically, what?
It makes it very difficult if this company's gone under.
Yes, it would. So, I guess my question is, and it may be the wrong thing, can we find somebody else that we think will still be in business in case something happens?
I guess it would be something for legal to figure out. I know that the structure's built to DOT standards. They've been building it to DOT standards for as long as they've been building them, over a hundred years. That's something that if you want us to look into, we definitely will.
I was just concerned about if they go out of business and we got no recourse, if there was some defect in the manufacturing or the building of it.
Didn't you mention something to me about another company was going to take over their accounts?
Well, from what I understand, when they shut down their operation, it was supposedly this company was having a hard time securing materials to build the product. And ultimately, I don't know if they were having some other financial issues that caused that. I'd be speculating on that. But ultimately, they shut the doors, and they had enough materials to complete a portion of their orders. All of the rest of their orders got divvied up amongst the other four or five companies throughout the U.S. And, you know, we were betting on a twelve-to-fourteen-week lead time. We ordered this thing in late September. If we pull back now and go out to another company to do it, I don't even know if legally we can pull out now, but if we did, we would definitely go on the tail end of everybody else's worries.
Understood.
So, we might not even meet Memorial Day at that time. You know, quite frankly, I'm not betting on March right now, based on what I'm hearing.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Book, Brooke?
Bob Brooke, I would share the questions of the board on alternative sources, because if this company goes out of business, you have, or may have no source of spare parts or maintenance, or any of the other things that you might have to do if you have problems with this system. So, it might be better off to go back and look for an alternative sources, some of the commissioners suggested. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, Mr. Anderson?
That's it.
That's it. It's my turn. I have nothing I wish to discuss tonight. We have no citizens' request. This is time for public comment, for anything in the world that you want to talk about. Ms. Bowman, at this time, be sure you identify yourself to the clerk. Thank you.
Coe Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. So, if you go to the State of Florida's website, www.miflorida.com, and you look up the Spanish land grants, these are what the State of Florida uses to claim its legitimacy to the Panhandle of Florida. It's from about Pensacola over to Waukula. If you download the entire index of names, it's like nine thousand names, you'll find all of these in mistakes, sections that don't exist in Baker Blocks. And if you take all of the names and rearrange them by their first names, because you see I've been plotting the Spanish land grants, and I kept coming across Andrew J., Thomas J., Benjamin F., and George W. So, if you stack up all the names by their first names, you'll find that there's a phenomenal amount of Williams, Johns, James, and Thomases. As a matter of fact, out of the three hundred and seventy names that start with T, three hundred of them are Thomas, and half of those are Thomas Jays. So, basically, this is a false document that the State of Florida has been using to claim its legitimacy to the Panhandle of Florida. It's also embedded in the property appraisers' website of Walton County, Okaloosa and Bay. And before, when I told you about the State of Florida's not gonna be able to back you up on your illegal development of all of this land down here, that's actually federal agricultural Indian land, they've been using these Spanish land grants to do that, and they're not gonna be able to do it anymore, because this is a totally fake document. I'd like to read to you some of the names that are in this document. Tricky William, Wiley Hair, Jefferson Davis, Robert Kennedy, William Booth, Benjamin Franklin, Louis Clark, Stephen Hawkins, Jacob's Lawyer, Gurley Joseph... Louis Clark, Stephen Hawkins, Jacob's Lawyer, Gurley Joseph, Gay Bunyan, Barefoot Noah, Mr. Weed, Mr. Reefer, Mr. Kilo, a Miss Mary Shealy, and a Mr. Renfro. There's a James Bond, a James Brown, a James Dean, a George Harrison, and Elvis. There's a Wealthy Taylor, a Shepherd Fountain, a Bird Dock, a Bird Dock, a Hardywood, a Greenwood, a Green Waters, a Green Barrow, a Green Brown, a Mr. Green Bush, a Mr. Harry Bush, a Mr. Horny R. Doctor. There's a Painter John, a Farmer Tom, and a Milk Cheese Dick. So the state of Florida isn't going to be able to legitimize your legal, your illegal actions here. So, "By the order of the Choctaw Nation, I command you to cease and desist construction on the Choctaw Key due to a demonstrated inability to properly manage, handle, design, and construct on this land, and due to a demonstrated refusal to follow the advice of the U.S. Geological Service, and due to a demonstrated ignorance of federal law mandating that the majority of this land remains undeveloped, and because you use construction as a cover for illegal gas fracking, you are hereby stripped of all your authority to grant permits expressed, implied, or in writing to build anything on the Choctahatchee Key. This includes roads, paths, and lots."
Ms. Bowman, your time's up.
You have been served.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Would the board like to take about a 20 or 30 minute break before we get into the planning issues?
Very much.
All right, we're going to stand in recess till 5:30. Let's come back to order, please. We're going to move forward with item number 41 on the agenda. Mac, I guess that's yours, where did he go? There he is. Mac, 41, request for direction, Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan.
Yes, sir. We're requesting the opportunity to work with the Inlet Beach Group to revise the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan. I think Kristen would like to speak on that for just a moment.
Okay, Kristen.
Good evening. The Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association approached us and asked us if we could work with them on their neighborhood plan, and we think it's appropriate to get authorization since it will be county staff assisting. We do have Kelly Frymire here tonight, who is our new urban design planner. She's got a landscape architecture background, and she would be the project manager on that. And we think we could help. We do have some inconsistencies between their plan and the current comprehensive plan that we need to fix, so just respectfully ask for some direction there.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that, Heather, or just board approval, or what?
I think we can move forward with unanimous consent unless one of you has an issue with it. It's going to be a fairly lengthy process, it's going to involve a lot of things that are already going on.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good idea for y'all to work together, especially with the comp plan changing and all. I'm glad that y'all are going to be working together, I think it'll be good for them and us.
So absent any dissent, we will move forward in that direction.
Move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think the rest of it is QJ?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Heather.
Okay. Anybody who anticipates testifying on any of these quasi judicial items that are about to be heard, please rise, raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And when your time comes, would you please come up to the podium and state your name, spell your last name for the record, and please indicate whether you've been sworn.
Thank you.
For the commission, has there been any communications that would prevent any of the commissioners from rendering a fair and impartial decision on any of these matters?
No.
I have communication, but it will not render me.
Okay, and did you submit your?
I've turned it proper, thank you.
Okay, so the forms are on file with the clerk.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we have tonight is the Seaside Post Office Flat, and tonight, we have a request to table this item. It's not quite ready to bring before you, and rather than continue it, we're going to request to table that. It will come back in probably about six key days.
Is this the first time we've had to table this?
Actually, I think this is the third time this is on the agenda. They've had some difficulty getting a signature on the platform regional utilities based on completion of infrastructure, and to give them some more time to do that, so we don't have this before you announce to continue it, we just want to table it tonight.
So will it readvertise?
It will be readvertised when it comes back, yes. There's no notices to people within 300 feet for a plat. It would be just a simple newspaper advertising of our agenda.
Hadn't we in the past, if it got a certain number of passes, or that we said it could?
Yes, sir, and we're here tonight at that point.
At that point.
That's what we're asking.
So we can either say no, or give them a little more time.
We would request to give them a little bit more time. They are moving the post office from the 38 site onto the other side of the green space there.
Okay. What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve to table.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, and a public comment. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thanks, sir. Next item is the Mall Bridge LLC. This is a request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Bob Beronte. They're requesting approval to develop 12,000 square feet of office and storage space on 1.45 acres and a future land use of general commercial. This is an individual lot development in the Bay Grove Office Park, just north of the bridge on 331 on the west side. And it is ready to go.
Okay.
And I'd like to ask for the staff report to be entered into the record.
So moved. Okay, the applicant, have you got any comments or presentation you want to make?
Fairly simple, this is a platted subdivision, and we're developing 11,200 square feet within it. Access is there, infrastructure's there for the most part, so one of the simpler projects that we can actually get.
All right.
But I'm here if you need any, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I do. This is extremely close to Brandon Oaks. We've been discussing Brandon Oaks long before I think I got into the county. We need to begin with, one of the relevant information is stormwater retrofit to improve drainage and reduce flooding impacts for Brandon Oaks subdivision and Southern Bay Grove Road, and this is, I think, 300 feet from that area.
Yes.
From Brandon Oaks.
And we're aware of that. This subdivision was developed many years ago, and we understand the drainage issues with Brandon Oaks, and we're working with the county. The HOA, what happened about 12 to 18 months ago, many of these lots were sold to individuals. They're just now being developed, and the HOA is just now, or the Owners Association's just now being developed, but we are in contact with the county. We have every intention of working with them to resolve the Brandon Oaks drainage issues and to utilize an easement to pop off. So that's our commitment to the county.
Okay.
But we were separate, and we were not part of that development.
I'm afraid you're going to affect that development. That's already very much stressed. We've worked with the Health Department, in many words, regarding E. coli concerns, emergency letters. So much has come from Brandon Oaks, and being 300 feet away really does concern me. Anyone from, Charlie?
Good evening. Charlie Cotton, Walton County Public Works. We have been working closely, we do have a capital improvement project that we're working towards in this area that involves several properties in Brandon Oaks that we need easements from, and then also, we have requested that the business park grant us an existing easement, where there's an existing pipe running through that provides pop off for historical conveyance purposes. This particular development is downstream, and in the situation it's in, does it impact negatively or positively the drainage for Brandon Oaks? But we do, we are requesting that the HOA turn over that easement so that the county can upsize the historical conveyance pipe. So this is sort of independent of that. Right now, they are working on the HOA, so my understanding, the first meeting is on January the 30th. They've contacted me and said that they'd be willing to turn that easement over to us so that we could upsize that pipe. But this particular location doesn't negatively create a tailwater situation, in other words, for this, for Brandon Oaks.
Okay.
Does it affect anybody? Any other subdivision or?
No, ma'am, this one's actually downstream of Brandon Oaks, and it discharges to a tidally influence creek, and so really, there's no downstream or upstream impacts from this particular development.
Okay. Any other questions, Charlie? Any other questions? Hang on, I'm going to get the public comment, just a second. Any other comments from the applicant? You okay? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Betty, you're be, and sir in the back, you'll be right behind her.
Betty Letcher, and I just have property on Bay Grove. Where is this going to actually be? I'm a mallet bayou, but it's on Bay Grove Road.
You know where Old Chapman's?
Right there.
Where what?
Where Chapman's Restaurant used to be.
No.
That's up there. Can you see Betty?
When I go to our?
Can you see that, Betty?
Yeah.
That's Bay Grove.
Right here. This is Bay Grove Road, and this is Bay Grove Boulevard, with the first four lots within Bay Grove.
Is that where there's already a building there?
No, that's across the street. There's two buildings, one directly across the street from this property, and one's in the back.
Where's the bayou on here?
The bayou's over here.
Okay, so this, when I go to my place down Bay Grove, I won't see that, is that right?
No, the only way you would see this is if you were driving down 331 and turned into Bay Grove Boulevard.
Boulevard, okay, that's where there is an office building that no one's in there. And what are you putting there now?
What are we putting there? We're just putting in general commercial buildings.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So it's nowhere near any of the houses or anything?
No, no, no. No, it's got its own subdivision.
Oh, okay, okay. I just saw Bay Grove Road, that's what I was asking.
Sir, come on forward.
Hi, my name is Robert Rogers, I live on Bay Grove Road. I'm the second house on Bay Grove, actually. And we all know the Brandon Oaks history, so we're not even going to bring that up today, except for one little thing. When Bay Grove Industrial Park got granted into being an industrial park, part of that was the stipulation, you know, Bay Grove, or Brandon Oaks was going to put a turning lanes on and off of Bay Grove. If you go into the industrial park, and if you're coming from, say, Defuniac, you turn into Bay Grove Industrial Park. There is no exit to go north there unless you go on Bay Grove Road in front of my house. So all of this industrial park traffic is going to go into industrial park, go down, take a left, and turn back on Bay Grove Road to a single turning lane out on 331. There is no way to go north. If you turn back out of the exit on the Bay Grove Industrial Park, the road across from Bay Grove is a no-turn lane, and it's actual designated concrete where you can't do a U-turn. So, once they turn in that industrial park with an 18-wheeler, there is no way to get out unless you come down a residential street in front of my house. So besides the building that they're building, there's also six or seven other going up in that neighborhood. You know, and the stipulation was, there was going to be turning lanes on Bay Grove. It's already dangerous. If you look at that intersection on Bay Grove, the second one down, when you come down to come off 331, you have to turn back at like 1 o'clock. So you're coming down a hill and turning in there. It's really dangerous as it is. And now, when they go in the industrial park, all that traffic is going to come in front of my house. If they can figure out a way to go in and out of their own thing, I am all for them, build everything they can, if it doesn't cause flooding and anything else. But if you look at these maps, none of them show how they're going to get out of the industrial park with an 18-wheeler. I just really think the traffic ought to be really considered in the decision on what you do here, because you're going to be routing everybody in front of my house from that whole industrial park when they leave. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair? This was not approved as an industrial park, and is not approved for industrial use. The land use there is general commercial, it's a business park. The building that's constructed there, the first building was constructed as an office building, and what they're proposing is general business, not industrial. We wouldn't anticipate 18-wheelers going in and out of that particular development. The turn lane that was previously part of the original development got preempted by US DOT, I mean, state DOT, when they four-laned 331. And the access across from that was their decision, not ours. But we don't anticipate 18-wheelers going in and out of this particular development.
So you're saying FDOT said that we could not, that they would not put a turn lane there, is that what you're saying?
As part of the four-lading.
Mac, have they met all the requirements?
Yes, ma'am, they have, subject to the two conditions in the staff report. This development meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan and land development code.
Okay. Any other person that want to speak? Patton already spoke on it. Seeing none, closed public comment. Applicants, you have your rebuttal if you have any.
Again, we're part of a subdivision that was already developed. All we are doing is taking the lots that were approved, and we're building on, we're getting approval for a use on those lots. So we're not putting in any new infrastructure, we are not putting any new circulation, really not even putting in any new utilities, we're just tapping on to the existing infrastructure there, so.
Okay. All right, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is number three on our planning agenda, the Draper Lake Cow Communication on Wheels. This is a request to approve by final order. It was reviewed by Renee Bradley. It's an application submitted by the Baker Donaldson Law Firm on behalf of New Cellular Wireless, PCS LLC, DVA AT&amp;T, requesting approval to construct a temporary 80-foot cell tower on wheels for a one-year period only on 2.51 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill. The project's located at 228 Seacraft Road in the Gulf Place area. And as you may recall, we've approved here, this board has approved the first of three towers that are coming off the Regional Utilities Water Tank that's just up the street on Seacraft. There will be a permanent tower on that site that will come back through this process, and we will have a third application, very similar to this, for Sprint Wireless, that will be coming back for you. And we've established these as one-year temporary uses. If for some reason they have to extend that, they will have to come back before this board and ask for an extension. But we expect that the permanent tower will be constructed within this one-year period in time for them to get moved before this expires.
Just to be clear, after the year, if Regional has redone their thing, it will all be moved to Regional's?
Yes, sir.
Where it is now, not where we're planning this one-year thing?
To 20 Seacraft Road.
Okay, all right.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions for Mac from the board? Seeing none, as the applicant present. Sir, come forward, identify yourself to the clerk.
Yes, my name is Patton Hahn, I'm with the law firm of Baker Donaldson. We have submitted the application on behalf of AT&amp;T. I don't really have anything to add to what the planning staff has recommended. We're certainly aware of the conditions upon which this is being granted, and working hard to make sure that we get the permanent tower put in.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any public comment? I have a speaking speaker card from, I think it's Patton Hahn. That's you? Okay. Then I don't guess you want to say anything. Is any other public comments in regard to this? Ms. Bowman.
I just wanted to let you know that when I type this number into the property appraiser's website, it comes up with a completely different parcel of land than what you're showing here. This one is right along the road, and it's long and skinny, and what's on the website is a big square, not in the same place. So you've got some inconsistencies on your.
That's not the site.
That's not the site.
Well, then why is that being shown?
That's the next one. Number four.
That's a different one, if I misread.
Okay, well, then maybe that's why it's completely different, that this is what you've been showing us the whole time, so.
All right.
That's what for me. That's what for me to think that that's what you were talking about.
There it is, right there on the screen, if you wanna look at it.
Okay, a big square, yeah, that looks more like it, okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Closed public comment, is any, it's time for rebuttal from the applicant, if you have any. All right.
Commissioner, we'd like to request the staff report be entered into the record and subject to the conditions in the staff report, does project meets the requirements of the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code?
I make a motion.
So moved.
We, excuse me. I make a motion that we approve this based on the one-year thing, and I know that it may take a little longer, but they will have to come back. This is a very sensitive subject to the people in that area, they're, they're very good about, they know it has to happen, but they're, they want some assurances it's done as quick as possible, so please tell your client to hurry up, and that's my motion.
Okay, motion, you got a second?
Second.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners, this brings us to the next item, the Forest View Village PUD Amendment, this is a request to approve a final order, this project's been reviewed by Tim Brown.
Coast Realty?
Hold on. Sorry. Let's go back to number four, I'm sorry. The Coast Realty Office relocation, this is a request to approve a final order, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown also, major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of Coast Property Group, requesting approval to develop 1,885 square feet of commercial office space on approximately .96 acres with future land use of village mixed use. This project's located on the north side of US 98 East, just west of Apostles Way and east of Old Ferry Road, and is identified by the parcel number in your package. You may know this parcel as being almost directly across the street from Christian International on East US 98. The applicant is here and he can describe the project.
Okay, you got anything you wanna state?
No sir, this is Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, small project, about 1,800 square feet of office space, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is any public comment concerning this project? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the Forest View Village PUD Amendment, request to approve a final order, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown, this major development order application is submitted by Interline Engineering on behalf of MH Forest View LLC, requesting to amend the 43.24 acre Forest View Village conceptual PUD with a future land use of general commercial, it's located on the north side of US 98 East, west of Saranova Road and east of Hayman Avenue and is identified by the parcel numbers in your package. You may recognize this as the private development that we purchased the sports park site from and the school board purchased the new elementary school site from. They are proposing some minor modifications to the conceptual PUD, this is not the technical, they will have to come back for the technical phases of this, they are asking for some additional deviations beyond the ones that were originally approved in the initial PUD. I'd like to ask David Smith there, agent, to describe those in detail and answer any questions you might have. Subject to the conditions in the staff report, we believe it meets the requirements of the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code and request that the staff report be entered into evidence.
So moved.
Good evening Commissioners, I'm David Smith with Interline Engineering, and I'll be very brief, but Forest View was originally approved back in 2005, and then as Mac mentioned, was amended in 2015, and the main reason for the amendment in 2015 was to remove the Walton County Sports Park and then the property that the school is currently being constructed on. There's two things that we're requesting before you this evening, and the first thing is we want to shift this line, which is the dividing line between the multifamily zone and the commercial zone, currently it's here, and we're shifting it there, so a very minor shift to our internal zone between multifamily and commercial, it's changed our master label, which is probably happening, I'm looking at this line.
Why?
The second modification is-
Now, why do you wanna move just that line?
Just with our, what we wanna do with our development, our units, allow people things from our commercials, all of them, especially when the line is shut for us. The second thing is, is we're doing an internal traffic reallocation, the proportion of fare shares already been paid, we're not changing our trips on the county's roadway network, we're reallocating our internal traffic for an 18,000 square foot office building by reducing our hotel to 98 units, so those are the two things that are before you. I did also want to clarify real quick is, we are not requesting any modifications to the deviations that we currently have, we wanna keep all the deviations we have, we're not adding or changing them, but I did want to clarify one thing, just because the deviations were discussed extensively at the 2015 meeting, may I hand these out real quick?
Have the clerk.
And then-
I'll wait for everybody to get it and I'll explain what it is.
These, and I'll be quick, these are the Forest View deviations, these are what were discussed in 2015. The ones in white were approved, the ones in green were approved in 2015, the ones in red were not approved in 2015, that's why they're in red, so we did not get those, they were not approved. So we just wanna keep everything we have, which is what's in white and green, and we're not requesting to change anything before you this evening, so I just wanted this to be clear, I know it's a, a larger development, I just wanted to be clear for everyone and for staff and for us, you know, what we have, and we wanna just keep what we have. So that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions from the board?
I do.
Go ahead.
I see, I understand you went from 127-unit hotel to a 98-unit hotel, are those, is that a vested, since it's a PUD, is that a vested interest you have? Is that hotel vested? The minute I see the word hotel down there, I'm very concerned.
It is vested. It was, yes ma'am, it was approved as 127 units in 2015.
All right, and what, do you have a height limit, or was this, so 15, it was, this was after the 50-foot limit, so it will be limited?
Yes ma'am, we have to meet the county's requirement for height, yes ma'am.
All righty.
This is a great place for a motel, it's right down from Christian International, and they constantly need motel rooms for conferences they have monthly, so.
Absolutely agree, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, is there any public comment from the audience?
Yeah, I thought that we weren't supposed to have hotels here, that, that it was only supposed to be 15-room bed and breakfasts, which I think we talked about with some other issue in, in the beach.
There's a limitation on 30A.
What's that?
On, on hotels, the room size, rooms numbers, but not on 98.
There, there's a limitation on the category of limited lodging.
Oh, 30A.
On 30A.
Oh, okay, because I've, I've, I've heard in the past that 98 is, this section between Inlet and Destin is considered part of the scenic core, but, whatever, I'm not gonna argue that right now. I did wanna ask, I've looked up the, the deeds, and the oldest one on here says that this property was owned by the Walton County Board of County Commissioners, and you gave it to your own service corp. How did you get this land for $100 in 2005, which is evidently when it was approved to be built on?
I don't think this board has any knowledge of what you're talking about, because we weren't here in 2005.
Okay, well then I can explain it, which is that this is part of the railroad deed, it's part of the Santa Rosa plantation, this piece of property is federal agricultural timberland, and you can't build anything on it, you see how there's no trees on it, that's because a timberman went in there and took all the trees off and probably didn't pay his taxes to the federal government on it, and you're gonna try to develop it before somebody finds out about it, because it's actually federal timberland property, which is what you've been doing all over this island. And I can always tell these pieces of land that aren't legal to be built on, because they always start with a $100 quit claim, and there's no evidence that you own this, so whoever you are that's developing this, you need to ask the federal government if there's a legitimate patented title to this land, because I guarantee you there isn't one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Closed public comment? Applicant, you, time for your rebuttal if you have any.
I don't.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may just briefly, and David you can respond, he presented you with a list of deviations and said those in white and green were approved and those in red were not approved, you're not asking the board to take any action on this tonight, whether to confirm or not confirm whether this is accurate?
Correct, I just wanted to submit this just for clarification, just because we're here.
And I just want to be clear, the board to be clear that you're not taking any action regarding the, the accuracy of this document.
Yes, thank you, the, the two things are shift in the line and the traffic reallocation. Thank you.
All right, what's board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners, the next item is the Palmetto Trace Townhomes, this is a request to approve a final order, it was previously reviewed by Tim Brown, it's a major development order application submitted by Core Engineering and Consulting on behalf of Palmetto Beach LLC, requesting approval to develop eight townhomes on approximately 1.16 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill. Project is located on the west side of Don Bishop Road, north of US 98, and south of Hackberry Way, is identified by the parcel number in your, in your package. We'd like to request the staff report be entered into evidence, and we believe the project with the conditions identified meets the requirements of the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code.
So moved. Okay, you got the-
Good evening, Ed Stanford with Core Engineering and Consulting, fairly simple project, this project actually was approved back in 2004, 2005 for nine single-family homes, but due to the market, it was never fully developed, it went to, bank foreclosure was bought, and the new owner has decided to develop these eight townhomes. Across the street are apartments, beside us are townhomes, and behind us are, to the north, are a couple of single-family lots that are part of a single-family subdivision. We've tried to buffer ourselves and our neighbors with almost 50 feet of separation between all of our buildings and the neighboring properties, again, and our access is off of Don Bishop instead of some of the more private streets, so we've attempted to do our best to insulate ourselves and our neighbors from any impact. In our planning commission meeting, the single-family residents to the north asked for an increased buffer, the owner of this property has been in, out of the country, he's just got back today, he is amenable to that, he's actually in the landscaping business, so I don't think we're gonna have any issues. We've also talked with the neighbor about, to the, to the west regarding their drainage issues, and we're gonna do what we can to help them have a positive outfall, depending on what the county says, you know, off their property, so we meet all the criteria for the land development code, but if you have any questions for me, certainly be happy to help or answer them, okay?
Speak to the stormwater issue of how you're gonna maintain it, which measures you're taking.
The stormwater itself pops off directly to the adjacent ditch that is on Don Bishop, we're not really raising this site a substantial amount, we have a very flat and shallow stormwater system that is in that 50-foot buffer we talked about, on the north and south side of the units, and we have a very positive outflow to the, to the existing ditch.
Okay, any questions from the board? Seeing none, okay, is there any public comment? Ms. Bowman.
Yes, this piece of land is also from the Santa Rosa plantation, you can't build on it, and if you actually look at the oldest document in here, it's not a deed at all, it's a, it's a, it's a home loan for a brown television set, a refrigerator and a washing machine in range, so this is what I'm talking about when I say that there's fake deeds and fake documents out there, they've been going on for like 50 years now, or at least since 1985, since they entered that virus into the national database, the Spanish land grants I told you about, but so this, if you look at the second to oldest deed, it specifically says that it's part of the Santa Rosa plantation, book two, plat four, I mean, blah, 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 so you can't build on it either, I'm sorry, at least not anything more than one single-family residency per half acre, so that would be two and a half homes allowed on this property. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, what's board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners, that moves us to item number seven on the planning agenda, this is lot 28, southwest Commerce Park, request to approve by final order, this project was reviewed by Tim Brown, it's a major development order application submitted by McNeil, McNeil Carroll Engineering, on behalf of the St. Joe Company, requesting approval to develop two industrial buildings totaling 11,750 square feet on approximately .88 acres with a future land use of business park, project's located on the east side of Saranova Road, north of US 98 East, and that development is just east of the sports park, and also the Forest View. We'd like to request that staff report be entered into evidence, and subject to the conditions included in that staff report, we believe this project meets the requirements of the Conference of Plan and Land Development Code.
All right, so moved. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Hello, good evening, Sean McNeil with McNeil Carroll Engineering, I think you represented our application very well, we certainly wish your consideration of our project for a final order.
Okay.
If you have any question, I'll be able to answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any public comment? Ms. Bowman, if you're gonna go over the same stuff you brought, hang on, listen to me, I'll take judicial notice of it and we'll make it part of the record, if you're gonna use the same arguments that you had in the previous three.
No, this is, just happens to be a St. Joe property, St. Joe Timberland Company, the, they don't, they never owned this land, it was just a lease, so this is another huge problem with what's been going on, is that St. Joe has been selling land that it doesn't actually own.
Well, Ms. Bowman, let me give you something to chew on.
Sure.
All right, you've got all these things that you always bring up here, if you feel so strongly about it, get you an attorney and sue the federal government and everybody else, if you think we are wrong, we do not think we're wrong.
Oh, I don't think you're wrong, I know you're wrong, and I'm not gonna sue you because that's what you want.
Well, either way, it's up to you to take any action, 'cause we take it.
No, 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 the federal government's all over you right now.
Well, I hope they are.
Yes, because I told them to get on you. But anyways, this was also a $100 quit claim from St. Joe to St. Joe, and, and $100 from St. Joe to St. Joe, so how is it that they own this land if they didn't pay anything for it? And that's because it was only leased timberland.
Very well, any other public comment? Seeing none, what's board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, I think number eight.
Thank you Commissioners, that brings us to the last item on our agenda tonight, the shops at Inlet, this is a request to approve a final order, it's, it's been reviewed by Tim Brown, it's a major development application submitted by McNeil Carroll Engineering on behalf of FNF Enterprises, requesting approval to construct 13,462 square feet of retail space on approximately 1.46 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill and an Inlet Beach traditional neighborhood plan designation of neighborhood commercial. The project is located on the northeast corner of North Walton Lakeshore Drive and US 98 East intersection and is identified by the parcel numbers indicated in your package. We'd like to request that the staff report be entered into evidence, the applicant is here to further describe his project.
So moved. Give him, the applicant.
Yes, same Sean McNeil, McNeil Carroll Engineering, representing-
You have been sworn, I ain't taken.
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir, I was out in the lobby and-
Counsel?
Do you solemn swear the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you, thank you, sorry about that.
Neil, do we have to redo the last one, since he was, he wasn't sworn, he did that?
You were not sworn when you-
He represented the-
Said very minimal things, but I'll be happy to be-
Raise your right hand please, do you solemn swear the testimony that you gave in the prior proceeding that was held this evening was the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Sorry for the delay. Yes, this project is a, a shop at inlet. The, the project, one of the concerns is the driveway entrance off of North Walton Lake Shore Drive entrance. The developer has agreed that there would be no semi trucks or delivery trucks going along that roadway. I think that was an issue that was raised by the residents in the rear. And also there will be a sidewalk installed along North Lake Shore Drive. So other than that, I think the package has been reviewed and approved, and again, we appreciate your consideration of the final order.
Okay.
So you have agreed to do, to build the sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's...
And prohibit semi rigs on North Walton?
Yes, yes, sir.
And then I've got one other concern. Under conditions of approval, it says no final DO will be issued until previous DO involving the east half of lot 167 is amended and approved. I'm not, do we have the cart before the horse? Because it sounds to me like if we approve this, we're approving this east half of lot 167.
Mac.
Yes, thank you.
I'm happy to speak to that Commissioner. This board previously approved the development on the east half. It did not contemplate a development on the west half. Since that previous approval, the developers got together and decided to make one project. So we've got to go back and amend the previous approval to marry it up to the side of this particular project. There was land use buffer and there are some parking lot interconnectivity that needs to be made in the other project, so it connects directly to this project. And there would be internal circulation between the two without having to get out on Highway 98 or North Walton Lake Shore. And that condition is at Planning Department's request.
All right, then, will it come back to you, Mac?
It probably would not come back to you because we expect that to be a minor development order. It doesn't affect density or intensity. It only affects the infrastructure and how that project previously approved connects to the project you're being asked to consider tonight.
And I think that's a restaurant or it was a restaurant in the past. It's going to be an oyster bar or something.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, and then the other thing I'm concerned about on these, on the documents that we have, it shows on 98 that there is a right turn lane either being built or is built that is not this right turn lane where I've got pink. Is that being built? Because that's, my assumption is that's going to be for the 18-wheelers.
Yes, and I believe that was approved as part of the previous project.
It was? Excellent. Good to hear.
Now, at the, at the planning commission, this development was approved and they recommended two additional conditions in addition to the staff report conditions. After much discussion, they recommended that no semi or delivery traffic be allowed on North Walton Lake Shore Drive entrance.
And that's going to be, we're going to, we're going to not impose that, but how are we going to verify that? That is...
Well, in speaking with Public Works and our transportation manager, Chance Powell, he's not sure that that's something that we can actually do because that is a public street and we can't restrict deliveries to the residential part of that particular neighborhood, which would be potentially semi delivery for furniture or something like that, or appliances. So that, that, we're not sure that we can support that. The planning commission did recommend that and we brought it to you for your consideration. Then speaking with Public Works, who was not at the planning commission since then, they've suggested that that doesn't look like something that they could support or that we could actually do.
Mac, do you know where that came from? Was that from the board itself looking at the semis on that or did that come from people within the community?
We had testimony from the individuals that live on the west side of North Walton Lake Shore that were concerned about the additional non-residential traffic coming up North Walton Lake Shore. Our issue is that this parcel is built as mixed use. I'm, I'm sorry, it's neighborhood infill and in the inlet beach plan, it's neighborhood commercial. It's designed to have commercial kinds of traffic and this is a public street, but that was a concern voiced at the planning commission by members of the public, and they did vote to include that recommendation to this board.
And if we were to take that recommendation and implement it, then anybody living north of 98 on that particular road could not have an appliance, lumber, or anything else delivered to them if it came in on a semi.
That would be...
I mean, that's the way I look at it. If you prohibit it on there, it can't go anywhere up there. And I think that's going to have a major impact on anybody that's got a new furniture or appliances or whatever delivered to them.
Well, and if that, that traffic is coming eastbound on US 98 and they're not able to take the restricted left turn north onto North Walton Lake Shore to enter the west end of this particular project, they would have to travel down to the next available unrestricted opening, which is at the Grand Point entrance, the last intersection cut eastbound in Walton County, and have to make a U-turn with a semi possibly there. So that was another concern about safety, about that particular restriction. The planning commission did recommend including installing a sidewalk on North Walton Lake Shore Drive, and you heard from the applicant that they had agreed to do that. I've spoken with Public Works and they believe that is something that, that can be accomplished.
And they're going to do it at their expense?
Yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am. That would be to improve the pedestrian safety in that area because there's not presently a sidewalk on either side of the road right now.
So I guess the only thing we possibly can do would be to put signs saying like truck entry on Highway 98. That would be the best we could do to keep the truck traffic. Because this, this area looks like it's going to get backed up. Should that semi not be able to turn in? We're going to have a pileup right here on 98 and North Walton Lake Shore Drive.
Well, the signage on, to restrict that, you're talking about, we're going to have, I believe, have DOT agree to that and do whatever they can because if you put it out on the state right away, which is probably where it needs to be if you're trying to control it, but...
There would be, need to be some signage on US 98 to notify folks that we're going to turn left there, that they couldn't turn left there. And that would be within the purview of USDOT. And we have not...
But that's going to restrict all semis. It, I mean, that's what we're talking about. And that's what you're concerned as, besides the, the turnaround and things like that, that, that if you lived on, on that road, you couldn't get a new refrigerator delivered on, if it was coming on a semi? Is that what you're saying?
That was our concern and the concern voiced by Chance Powell earlier today.
So a semi is going to come in, say it comes in on 98, its only way out, unless it's turning around a whole bunch of parked cars, would be out on Lake Shore Drive, North Lake Shore Drive? Based on the configuration?
They could potentially circulate back and come out on Highway 98 if they're coming eastbound, I mean westbound.
Okay.
They could potentially come in and out the same way on that US 98 entrance.
How many semis do we expect usually? Those are shops.
I'm not sure that I have that exact number, Commissioner.
Shops or...
This is primarily retail. There is going to be a restaurant, I think, on the easternmost portion where the, the westbound turn lane is, was previously approved. And this particular one is proposed to be 1300, 13,462 square feet of retail space.
Well, I don't know if it's a retail store, but to me, most of the ones I see these days, either UPS or Postal Service or what's the other one?
FedEx.
FedEx, they're the ones that deliver, you know, boxes of stuff for, you know, clothing stores and all that sort of thing. So I see more to me, and of course there'll be an occasional semi, but I don't see as many semis as I do trucks like that.
So just a curious question from me, Mr. Chairman. What happens today when those folks want to buy their furniture or their lumber?
It's a public road that has no restrictions.
Okay. But if I was hearing correct, the developer said they, they would restrict the ability of those trucks to enter into their development, and is that separate and distinct from trying to restrict it on the public road?
Well, and, I mean, technically it might be, but I'm not sure what the practical effect of that would be.
So...
Because some sign would have to be posted prior to that left turn...
Okay.
...on to North Lake Shore in the right way. And how we parse out which traffic is going to that development and which traffic is going further into the neighborhood, I don't know that we could put that on a sign.
Okay. Any other questions for Mac? All right. I have a speaker card from Rick Jaffe. You can come forward. And have you been sworn?
I was sworn, yes. I'm, my name's Rich Jaffe. We've seen each other before. It's J-A-F-F-E. I am the president of the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. My presence here purely is to get our position on the record with you folks. We have been working with John Freer, who was the developer of this whole thing, and his engineering firm since the get-go. Inlet Beach does not have a problem with this development per se. It's fine. It fits most of our requirements. It's, we don't have a problem with what they want to put in here. Our ongoing problem, and Commissioner, you just hit on part of it, is the access and egress here. We have efforted from the start to work on, initially there was a request for a traffic light at North Walton Lake Shore. That was not possible. Then we went for a median cut off 98 to get in there. FDOT said that's not possible. We can, in the most recent meeting, we discussed the possibility at least of putting no commercial traffic signs for going into this development on North Walton Lake Shore. The only access off 98 to this thing, as Mac pointed out, is going on eastward, pulling a U-turn at Grand Point and coming back and turning in. There is an access road, if you will, in the rear of this development that will dump out on North Walton Lake Shore. It is a small residential street that is quite frankly not designed for this amount of traffic or this kind of traffic. Hence, in the last meeting, we came up with the possibility of putting up no commercial traffic signs there so that we could limit at least, or try to limit, the number of semis and large delivery trucks that will be pulling in here. There are at least, I think, and John can clarify this, at least two food establishments that will be in here, along with a variety of other trucks. Our ongoing concern is dumping commercial traffic out of this development onto a tiny residential street. John has agreed to put in a sidewalk to at least get the foot traffic off the street to some degree and try and make it safer that way. But I will tell you, I'm also here speaking for Robert Smith, who owns a house right across from where this access road is going to come in, and it's right across from his driveway. And he has expressed a lot of concerns to planning and many other meetings about his concern for safety for the grandkids and that sort of thing. There is not, at this point, a good answer to our concerns about the access and egress to this place. I don't know if you can come up with a great idea, but we continue as a neighborhood association and as a community to be concerned about how people will come and go into this place and the impact that is going to have on a very quiet, very small residential neighborhood on a very small residential street. If indeed you have a semi coming down North Walton Lake Shore, you aren't going to get much of anything else in there for a while until he gets off of it. And God forbid, there's a wreck out in front of it. It's a whole different ballgame. As I said, I don't know what the, what the good answers are. We tried the best possible answers and they fell on deaf state ears, I guess. So it's in your ballpark.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Betty.
I haven't been sworn in. Betty Lector.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, yes. I'm, my concern too, and that was where that Dollar General was going to go and the concern of in and out there is going to be bad. Let me say this, the shops will look great and they're going to have a restaurant at the other end and all that, but I know where I live on South Inlet Beach, when an 18-wheeler comes down our little street and they go to turn, they knock down our, they knock down our stop signs. So if what Mac is saying that we're not going to be able to at least have signs there saying you cannot go in there, to me, it's bad. It really is. It's very bad to be putting that on a neighborhood street to, to do that. So I just wanted to put that to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Have you been sworn, sir?
John Freer.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So I'm the developer in, at this location. I'm also the restaurant owner of the restaurant that's going to be going in there. So I control all the tenant spaces. There, first of all, there is only one restaurant we talked about, I talked about with Richard at one time, but it's just going to be one restaurant, which will be the Oyster Bar, which is east of the shops at inlet. So what I proposed in the last, in the planning meeting was, since I control the leases on all tenants, that I can have a stipulation, a requirement that any deliveries are made on US 98 only, not on North Walton Lake Shore Drive, as well as, as the, they must exit onto US 98. And, and I also agreed that I, if, if, you know, the county would approve it, I would put up a sign depicting the same, you know, either on North Walton Lake Shore Drive or US 98 if needed.
Okay, as far as the signage, I understand you're willing, willingness to go forward on that, but we just got to make sure that whatever sign is going to be, it has to be approved by either DOT, if it's on there right away, and approved by our Public Works if it's going to be on Lake Shore, North Walton Lake Shore.
Yes, sir.
So if, I would assume that we could get, have you get with respective one, especially with the county that we...
Is that Public Works that we get with?
Yes, Public Works. Now, as far as DOT, you're going to have to check with them either in PDL or up in Chipley to see if you can get that verbiage put on there and properly placed and all of their requirements they have, if they'll even allow it, but you'll have to deal with them.
As an example, owning Shade's Restaurant at 3898, you know, we control delivery times with, with the delivery trucks and deliveries to the tenant space that aligns with, with the restaurant. And it's worked well for, since, you know, 2003. So we have that ability, you know, to, to help with that where it, you know, it really helps on the safety issue that everybody's concerned about with the big trucks.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Egress and egress on North Walton Lake Shore Drive. I just cannot see a semi turning right while cars at, at that stop. I just believe that there has to be no car on that road in order for a semi to turn in. Is there...
And that's, you know, that's another reason why, and I can't say that for sure as far as the radius and everything else. I mean, the radius looks, I don't know, the radius is 50 feet, so it would actually probably work, you know, by looking at that, you know, site plan, it doesn't look like it would, but it actually would, but we're going to drive that semi traffic away from there. I mean, that's, 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 and we'll enforce it. I'll enforce it on sites. My property, I'll enforce it with the, with the drivers. You know, I'm a hands-on, you know, developer, owner. They're going, they're going, they're going to access US 98 or, or they're, you know, they're going to have to face the consequences in some form.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I have a really easy solution to this, and this is what's going to happen. By 2020, there's not going to be any 18-wheelers or dump trucks allowed on the Choctaw Hachie Key at all. Nothing over six wheels is going to be allowed. You'll notice that Cisco and Coca-Cola have already started downsizing their trucks. So you see, there won't be a need for any more turn lanes and this man won't be having an issue because Cisco will bring him his food in a six-wheel truck instead of an 18-wheeler. I mean, you guys talk about congestion and too much traffic on the roads. Well, that's because there's like thousands and thousands of dump trucks from your energy company driving around dumping dirt everywhere they're not supposed to. So that's what's going to happen. By 2020, there's not going to be any 18-wheelers, dump trucks, or any heavy utility vehicles. If somebody is building a legitimate house and they need wood brought in, they'll just get a truck permit with their building permit. So there's your solution. No truck traffic at all on this island anymore. Thanks.
All right, any other public comment?
Rich, could you come up?
Rich, could you come up? I'm not sure, in, from a legal standpoint, about if we can limit semis on that road.
Understood, in fact, if I may, John and I were just talking about this, and this is a good example, quite frankly, of what may be a changing tide at Inlet Beach, which is developers, and we have a couple of other residential developers, who are engaged and engaging with us in trying to work things out ahead of time. What we were just talking about is the possibility, and I understand your point, it's a good one, that signage, depending on what it says, might hinder regular deliveries to folks who live back there.
Right.
And quite frankly, I'm going to be living back there. And I think one of, one of the possible solutions, and this is something for, for John to work out with your Public Works guys, would be signage to the effect of commercial deliveries for shops at inlet enter off 98, something to that effect, which wouldn't restrict standard commercial deliveries going back and forth on that street. Is it the right answer? I don't know, but is it close, maybe?
Yeah. Well, I, I appreciate you and, and John working together on this, and I know y'all have worked hard. John is a very responsible developer, he's very successful, he loves Inlet Beach, he's, he's one of the ones pushing the underpass because of the safety hazard there. I know you love, and Ms. Betty love Inlet Beach. I'm very encouraged that, that developers are working with you guys, and I'm very encouraged that y'all are working with developers. And I really think this could be a, a project that's really good for Inlet Beach, it'd be a lot of, you know, you gotta have shopping somewhere, and, and John's shown that he can, he can do it the right way. I, I want y'all to work together and figure out the signage issue. I, I agree with you, I don't, we can't have a lot of semis on that road, but, you know, to eliminate them, I'm afraid that they're gonna call Rich and say, hey, Rich, your couch is down at the corner, come get it.
And, and let me say, we're thrilled to have an oyster bar in Inlet Beach. And just to digress for a moment, in regards to this whole issue, which you guys mentioned a little while ago, the efforts by the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association to work on our amended plans have been going on for months, thanks, Kristen and Mac, we're really close, and I think it will make everybody's lives much simpler, and it's, it's been a great collaborative effort, and we look forward to making your lives simpler when it comes to dealing with Inlet Beach as well.
Always good for us.
Copy that, thank you.
Thank you. Mac, you got anything you wanna add?
Yes, sir. If Mr. Freer would be willing to commit to incorporating a statement regarding delivery only from US, the US-98 entrance to the, the two projects, that might be the most effective way to address that traffic. The signage, I think, would have to be out on Highway 98 in the median to keep people from making the turn and then realizing they can't turn into this particular development, because that would take the truck even further into the neighborhood. But if he was willing to structure his leases such that there would be a clause in there that would restrict multi-actual delivery to the US-98 side of the development rather than North Walton Lake Shore, that might be the most effective way to address what the citizens of that street are concerned about.
Okay.
And that's something that we could incorporate into the development order that I think might be effective.
Okay, all right. Anybody else that hasn't spoke, who wants to speak concerning this? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section. Commissioners, what, oh, well, it's for the applicant, if you've got any rebuttal you want to offer, or you're good with what you got, okay. All right, what's the board's wishes?
I make a motion with the restrictions and the agreement that Mac talked about with the developer, that he incorporate that into his lease, less really try to work to, to give the people on that road as, as big a safety span as we can do, and with those restrictions and agreements in place, I make a motion, we approve this.
I'll say.
I, I've, I've got some discussion, make sure we understand what your, your motion is and what you're approving. If you look at what was recommended from the planning commissions, no semis or delivery on North Walton Lake Shore, I think it's been stated, we can't control that.
Right.
So, I don't wanna recommend that, but we, we still part of putting, them working with Walton, the Public Works to put a sidewalk out there, I think that should be part of it.
That's part of, that's part of the...
And then, in regards to the staff report, the D.O., those recommendations listed in the staff report is part of the approval process.
Right.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
And the letter, yeah.
And, and the agreement.
May I make a stipulation regarding the sidewalk?
I'm sorry?
May I make a stipulation regarding the sidewalk? If we're gonna work with our Public Works, because now we're putting more work on our, on...
Well, I'm not, I don't think I'm wanting them to do the work, it's just work with them to make sure it's placed in the right spot and the size of it.
Okay, and it's, and the sidewalk is open when the shops are open? Okay, I see, I see the nod from the developer, thank you.
I think that's what we're talking about, right, we're not asking our Public Works to put it in.
Okay, I got you, my bad.
That'd be the developer's responsibility, so we all clear on what we're voting on? Okay. We got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and I think that's the end of it, is Mac?
Yes, sir, that concludes our agenda.
Thank you.